Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello.
It's now seven oh one?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello.
It's now seven oh one?
Test.
I know.
It's yours unplugged?
It's unplugged in. Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's definitely not. Hold on, did somebody turn somebody down?
No, just Maureen.
Just Maureen, my mind.
We'll just share this one here. Okay, there we go, you can hear me. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting of the Armada Planning Commission to order. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll caucus?
Abercrombie.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
Finn.
Here.
Jabara.
Here.
Carey.
Here.
Kutchy is not.
He called in sick.
Uh, Murray.
Here again.
And me.
And our new planner.
And our new planner.
Would you like to just, for the audience, it's not a name and where you're from?
Sure, I'm Caitlin Haven, um, I am with Waitram, I'm a professional planner there, so happy to start this, uh, relationship with you and the journey of our zoning ordinance update.
We're happy to have you here, thank you. Um, next is the, uh, agenda, we have, need a motion to approve the agenda if there are no amendments.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll support.
Beth and Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next is the approval of our minutes from our last regular meeting, which is February seventh. Now, Chris, you've got, uh, one update on here.
Two, actually, one on the front, one on the back.
Oh, that's, okay, so these minutes, um, if they're, if we, would be, um, approved as amended, correct? Okay, are there any other corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the corrections.
Okay.
amended.
amended, okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so, Beth, Maureen, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries, and can pass that down to Chris, thank you. Okay, next is, um, our first public comments, we do have one at the very end of the meeting as well. Anyone online, this is the first public hearing comments. We don't have public comments, not public hearing. One person muted, so. Kathy? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, we have no, uh, public hearing tonight, so, uh, we'll get an update on what's happening around the township here. Okay, so, first item, we still have, uh, Blake's Traffic Study and Landscaping, uh, no update there. No update on Larry's Parking Lot on North Avenue. Uh, Trillium Wedding Barn, thirty-two mile road, no update. Boo Boo's Boneyard Dog Daycare, uh, that, property owner filed application for leave to appeal with the Court of Appeals, asking for review of the Circuit Court decision. The township response is on two twenty, so I'm sure that's in the court's hands right now. Uh, Hidden River Estates, uh, thirty-three and Polino, update. Latham Development, um, Powell Road.
Actually, there is an up- update on Hidden River.
Okay.
Um, today, I received a request to provide them with the proper language for the, um, uh, the bond, the, the performance bond, so I, um, am waiting to talk to Taylor on that tomorrow.
Okay. So, we do have an update there. Nothing new with, uh, Latham Development on Powell?
No.
And Hunt Storage, still nothing started there? So, no update there.
Nope.
Miller Farm, uh, paperwork was requested by the property owner to request rezoning to the Ag SAA overlay district. And Frontier's Farm Market, which is on Romeo Plank by thirty-two, paperwork, um, also requested by the property owner to request rezoning to Ag SAA overlay, which is similar to what we have at the cider mill.
And they have also requested a, um, pre-application meeting with Caitlin, and that was paid for this week.
That was Frontier's?
Frontier's.
Okay.
And DJ, um, if you wanted to be invited to that, let me know and I can forward you the, the link.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Should there be one of the other, what, if he cannot make it, who's the alternative? Beth?
Would he be more ready?
I'm available.
Are you available?
I'm available.
If he's not available.
Okay, we'll discuss that in the main seat.
With that.
Yeah.
We'll see which one of us wants to town.
Yeah, that's fine, or...
I'm sorry, then, I, I know I've got an email on that, the date was...
Uh, it's next Wednesday at one thirty.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, Commission, uh, Projects, um, zoning owners amendments, well, that's gonna be a fun one, because we're gonna be diving deep into that with, with Caitlin, so. And she'll be updating that, I'll sum that later in the meeting. Uh, the master plan, you should have a copy on the desk here in living color.
Beautiful.
This is what's going out to the public. Um, we can still amend that and fix any, depending on the, uh, input we receive, and if, you know, if you find anything in there that's not correct, but, um...
Yeah, I'm assuming that that will go next week, Thursday, the letters will go out, um, after the regular township meeting.
Right, 'cause we've already recommended it to the boards to, so they will be reviewing it, okay. Uh, let's see, so that's, that, that's, that's blank, so, any other updates, Chris?
Nothing that I can think of.
Okay.
I have an update.
Okay, Joe?
On the village with the Township, uh, joint venture, uh, for the grants.
The Sem Cog?
Correct, for the grants.
Okay.
Um, so, last... Three weeks ago, Monday, two weeks ago, what have you, um, I presented it to the Board, uh, Plan Commission, and they were tentatively gonna get back with me, uh, before this meeting, and I've yet to hear from them. And we've been going back and forth, long story short, is I'm gonna continue on with the grants, well, assuming they're not gonna participate. And then if they do, we'll tie them in to them.
So you, I don't mean to interrupt, but you presented to the Village Council.
No, both.
To both?
Board and, and Commission.
Okay.
And, you know, I, uh, they forwarded the letter finally this last, you know, meeting, and they're gonna take it under consideration, so, I'm not gonna direct my efforts there, so, I'm gonna continue with our own. And then if they change their minds, so be it. The other thing is, well, I'll wait, go ahead then, DJ, I'll bring it up later.
All right. Um, let's see, we also received some letters from DTE regarding, um, compatible renewable energy ordinance. And I did have one question on this, maybe, maybe Caitlin, you might be able to answer it. They're saying on this letter, importantly, all local units in which a project is proposed, including the county, must have a CREO in place in order for the local project review and the permit, permitting to be mandatory, including, so, again, so, as long as we have something in place...
It's a very specific something, so, in the state enabling legislation, it talks about that acronym, um, which is essentially a separate police power ordinance that says you want to opt into the process. Think of it about how we did the same thing with marijuana. You had to have that separate police power, says we do not want marijuana, or we do want marijuana. They're asking for that same level of step to be taken for the renewable energy involvement. So that's what we would want to have in place before that November, I think, twenty-fifth deadline this year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. And then we have a letter here about the Michigan Township Board of, of, um, is also, um, supporting the effort to repeal that renewable energy zoning, uh, preemption. Township of Ray also has their, um, draft master plan available, and I guess, uh, you gotta do some digging on their website to find it, but that's available for...
I'll get a direct link or download and send it out.
Yeah, I sent it there.
Okay.
I would just like to see it.
And then you should all have a copy of the, um, contact info for the Plan Commission and ZBA. This is just in your packet.
It's updated on.
And, and as a reminder, if, if for any reason you can't make it, even if it's a last minute, like Joe called me, said he got the flu, so, we all, you always need to call in and let us know in case we aren't gonna have a quorum. And then this was on the desk, the Township Insights, talking about the, uh, they're helping, holding the hearings on the new siting authority for the renewable energy, so it's a pretty hot topic. This one here, the Armada Township Zoning Compliance Checklist was on the, Chris, um, is that just FYI?
Yep, so, um, as part of, um, taking over, uh, some of your ASN work, this is a tool that we develop, um, to make sure that we're consistent over time on making sure we're checking all portions of the zoning ordinance. And so what I did was, is essentially, the first part, talking about zoning district classifications, there's a bunch of empty, um, boxes, that's intentional, so if it's a special land use, or there's other use requirements, you have that either in your special land use article, or in your general provisions, like home-based businesses, or something. I put those additional requirements that's use-based in those empty boxes. But it's essentially checklist, we also use it as a communication tool with potential applicants, or, or applicants right now, to show that transparency that you completed all of these items. So we do get to do a site plan review, my cover letter will typically cover only concerns, um, as opposed to talking about things that have already been addressed. So the checklist kind of helps show, these are all the things that were compliant, and then the letter focuses on things that are outstanding, so. I've looked through your zoning ordinance, I've updated it to the twenty twenty-three, based on all the different amendments you've had over the years. Um, but sometimes there's some institutional knowledge, you like, you always, somebody always forgets to do X, and so if there is that item, I can add it to that checklist and at least make sure that we're more likely to not have that, oops, or forgot, or something of that nature.
So, so this is a tool that'll be used at the township, it's not necessarily, if that's not to the applicant, for them to fill out, it's a checklist for us.
Sometimes what we'll do is we'll send, give it to them at pre-application meetings.
Okay.
This helps their designer, or them as themselves, be able to navigate your zoning ordinance to say, well, where should I be looking? You should be looking at all these different sections.
Gotcha, okay. Chris, it'd be very helpful.
Did you relay the message to her, what we talked about earlier? The other application that we had?
No.
About?
No.
I think we had one on file, but I wasn't sure if it was this, remember, you had brought it up.
Well, we have a site plan checklist.
It wasn't, okay.
But, we, as, as far as I know, we didn't have something like this that identified, these are the sections of the ordinance you need to go to.
Okay, I didn't know if you had a chance to check to see.
Yeah, I, I haven't...
It was three thirty.
Yeah, it was three thirty when you called me, so...
Just at a glance, this one looks much easier to use than the checklist, I've seen it's just a million questions on page after page.
Yeah.
But, but Caitlin believes that we would still be using both. This one just guides them to what they're looking for, and then the other one is all of the things within a section that they need to be checking off.
Yeah, so, well, so you already have your site information kind of checklist, the stuff that generally covers what you need to determine compliance? And so, when you get your site plan review, uh, from me, I'll also have a parallel one that does just that list. Um, and so that way, again, it shows that transparency that we say, okay, you addressed all these things, you did not these things, and then my cover letter will only focus on those things that are not covered, or you may wanna consider waiving.
So we'll probably see this along with, uh, the site plans.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, on your site plan, so, will you provide a recommendation on, on your, your review?
Um, so typically, we don't recommend a firm recommendation, so I alert everyone to concerns. Um, I also focus on different suggested motions to consider, so if you're looking at actions, these are your three actions you can take. Um, this makes it, so it's a little bit easier from a legal standpoint, so I'm not countering whatever your decision is, 'cause it's ultimately the Planning Commission and the Township Board's decision, based on all these different factors. Does this get a recommendation for approval or denial? But generally, based on the content of the letter, you can generally see which way we're going.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports or any correspondence? Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order to receive and file the reports and correspondence.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Maureen.
I'll second.
And Steve? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Okay, no one finished business, so, uh, oh, we got the new business, we have the election of officers, which we do every March. Uh, just get my little thing here. Okay, election of officers, elected by majority vote of the Plan Commission each regular meeting in March, that's tonight. So the Chair, um, presides at all meetings, and is also an ex officio member of all committees. The Chair, subject to the rules here and contained into the governing procedural reference, shall decide all points of order or procedure, unless otherwise directed by a majority vote of the Commission in the session. Uh, Vice Chair takes the place of the, uh, Chair in their absence, and then the Secretary will preside, um, in the absence of the Vice Chair and the Chair. And if we don't have those three people, we don't, probably don't have a quorum. Currently, I am the Chair, Maureen is the Vice Chair, and Joe is the Secretary. So, um, we have any nominations for Chair?
Um, I'll go ahead and nominate DJ to continue as Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, I will, I'll accept that nomination. So, we, we never got, uh, so, do you want a voice vote, or just a?
Caitlin's nodding her head, yes.
Want to take, want to take, want to take a roll? So ta- take a, a roll vote?
You don't need a roll vote, you can just do the yes.
So, all in favor of myself, is continuing as Chair, say aye.
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 All opposed, okay, motion carries. All right, uh, nominations for Vice Chair?
I am interested, yes.
I will nominate Maureen as Vice Chair to continue in her role as Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, any, any other non- nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, seeing none, uh, all in favor of, uh, Maureen for continuing as Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, motion carries. And then Secretary, any nominations for Secretary?
Joe, are you interested in continuing in your role as Secretary?
Yeah. Hold that thought.
Are you nominating Sarah?
I will, if he's interested in, yeah, I will nominate Joe to continue as Secretary.
Okay, Joe accepted, um, I don't even know if we need this, really need the seconds, but...
Do we have a second on the Secretary nomination?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, that was, okay, let's see.
Are we doing Beth or Maureen?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, I get, I wrote, I got, I've been pounced, so I wrote Beth.
Okay.
Second shape, but, okay, all in favor of Joe for Secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Okay, motion carries, nothing changes, the more it stays, okay. All right, so that bit of business is done, we can put Caitlin on the spot. So, um, from what I understand, Caitlin, it looks like you're gonna take us through a little, um, update on planning and zoning, so, you can, we can get familiar with each other, and that'll kind of bring us up to date where with the master plan, and then where we're gonna go with the zoning ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct, and so, the first part's gonna talk, do some basic training, kind of, reger, kind of re-put you all in the same, um, field as we then start the zoning, which is our implementation of our master plan, but also is where our rubber hits the road. What do we want to actually have implemented within our community, how quickly? And so you have your presentation in front of you, and then we're actually gonna talk specifically then about the zoning ordinance, um, project as a whole. Um, go over some different preferences and things of that nature. If you ever have any questions during the presentation, flag your hand, and we'll circle back to that, um, as we kind of go through the presentation. All right, um, so our agenda for today, um, as I mentioned, we'll have some different basic training, talk about roles and responsibilities for the various boards that we interact with. You'll be talking about the master plan, a- as you know through that process, then how it connects to your zoning. We'll be talking, um, about the zoning ordinance project. Um, one of the special topics we'll talk about, which we mentioned earlier, is alternative energy, so I'm going to do a brief overcap of what that legislation specifically said, um, and then we can kind of get from there, um, and then if there's any other questions or things of that nature. I will warn you that next meeting that we have together, there is in some additional training that we're gonna conduct, but I wanted to kind of break up the training, so that way, we're not having too much training in one meeting.
Thank you, my little brain hates you.
Sure. Um, and so if we look at our planning and zoning, these are the different topics, I won't read those, 'cause we're about to dive into it, but those are the main topics that we're gonna be talking about. Um, so first, what is planning, so as a discipline, um, it is a multifaceted discipline that you look at development, but mainly your community and your social welfare, and the physical components that make up your community. When you have a plan, or why do we make a plan for our community, it's to make sure we're having orderly development, so we wanna have some level of control or predictability. Does this corridor become commercial, or does this one stay residential? Those different kind of factors. We wanna look at our community, um, from a strengths and protections, but that includes the people, but also the environment as well, um, to maintain our community identity, and specifically in a rural community, that's very, um, component, is very important. And then also look at cooperation between other jurisdictions, as well, as though we have our jurisdictional boundaries we can control, there are those that live on the edge, um, and so it's important to be complimentary of those. Um, when you're looking at the planning, um, guiding general principles, um, change is inevitable, things are going to happen within your community. And so, one way to respond to that is what you put in your master plan, and what you put in your zoning ordinance to help go through that process. You can be proactive or reactive, that can depend on the topic at hand, which approach best suits your community. Uh, the community investment from the source, so again, what are people willing to put into a business, or into their property, in which they're getting that payoff back? Um, you wanna make sure there's legal basis for your zoning decisions, um, that's very critical. Um, and then also looking at different funding supports, 'cause there's only limited resources to be able to execute then what you need to do. Relationship between planning and zoning, so your zoning ordinance, uh, the main purpose is to protect your public safety and welfare of your community. Um, and that's from our Michigan Planning Enabling, um, Legislation, but also our zoning regulation. So, with that, every master plan is the basis of your zoning ordinance, every community that would like to zone needs to have that. So, I believe it's on the screen, yep, all right. Um, you have your two different enabling legislations, the, the Planning Enabling Act focuses more on your master plan components, so, basic planning, your planning commission, as opposed to your zoning enabling legislation focuses more on the zoning or implementation. Your zoning board of appeals is there, um, you have your different statutory requirements, different exemptions are also included there for some very specific uses. Um, and so that's kind of the difference between those two acts, if you ever hear those, um, mentioned within a conversation. Any questions so far? Okay, um, so next is talking about roles and responsibilities, so we'll go over the Township Board, Planning Commission, ZBA is the main boards that deal with zoning, um, in itself. So your Township Board, they are in charge of appointees, so we are all appointed officials on your Planning Commission, same with your ZBA. The Township Board does the approval of amendments, um, that includes rezonings, 'cause whenever you do a rezoning, you're also amending your zoning map, or your ordinance. They approve different budgets, they approve your special land uses, and they have the right to approve your master plan, but they're not legally bound to. Most jurisdictions do, so I would anticipate that will likely be your course of action. We go to the Planning Commission, your job is to be the developers and pretty much the soul of your master plan. Let's say we get to the public hearing, you say this is the draft we would like to adopt, you adopt the draft, you go to the Township Board, and the Township Board says, you know what, we're gonna ax this whole section, we don't agree with it. They cannot just adopt it then, it has to come back to the Planning Commission, you have to bless that change, or it's not going to be adopted. Um, so you do have a lot of control, um, as part of the Planning Commission on the future of your community through that master plan. You're the main body that deals with the development process, um, so holding the public hearings for a special land use, that's not at the Township Board level, that's at your Planning Commission level, um, but also at an ordinance amendment, that's held at your level as well. You approve those different site plans, subdivisions, or condo developments, and you make different recommending reviews. The ZBA are zoning board of appeals, um, so they do variances, appeals, um, so appeals, in this sense is, um, specifically, decisions that your Township Board or you make, they can appeal that, or even your zoning administrator, and they can get a second round. So they're almost like a judicial, but not quite a judicial branch. You can look at interpretations for your ordinance, and then other duties as your ordinance specifies, which we'll go into when we do the ZBA section of our ordinance. Um, so as I mentioned, with your Planning Commission, um, you have different appointed residents that are, all of us serve on. You have part of that master plan process, um, and then that zoning ordinance review, and then all the various different zoning applications.
That's what's up.
Oh, no, okay, I got all lost on myself, okay, sorry. Um, so again, with that ZBA, some of the really important components of their role, um, specifically is, they are also members of your community, they're residents. Um, they are part of that, um, judicial kind of, why do you get an exception to the rule, which is a variance? Um, and that appeal process for different staff, for Planning Commission, Township Board decisions, and again, they're that last resort, so, before they have to file for court, you have to exhaust your administrative processes, the legal terminology. And so this is one of those steps to, before you go to a court situation. The, so, that...
It didn't change.
It didn't change, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, so then safeguarding, essentially is what your ZBA is doing, when they're looking over property right requires, essentially from a variance standpoint. You're ensuring that their application processes, that's when they're appealing somebody's decision in a lot of ways. They're keeping zoning regulation out of the court situation, so if you can resolve that before it gets there, that's ideal. Eliminate minor, uh, amendments as needed, 'cause you can get a, a variance if it is very specific to a project, or an interpretation, um, in which then you're having that safety, um, situation, or the expense and things of that nature. Um, so one of the things that's really important to know, um, from a variance standpoint, is that you should, that we'll use the term non-use variances. And that means that these are any level of variance, so it can be a dimensional requirement, you'll sometimes see that mentioned, but it can also be any requirement, so it can talk about not only a dimension of a driveway, but it can talk about the philosophy of how many users can use that driveway. Can talk about the material of that driveway, you can get a variance from any rule in the ordinance except uses. So, a use variance is specific to when there's a use listed in a zoning district, but it isn't in the zoning district I'm in, or I want, and I want that use in it, and use it as an exception for a variance. So as our township, as far as I know, we did not, back in two thousand and fifteen, use use variances, so when they codified a bunch of the planning legislation, that means that you weren't able to start that process. Um, so we, as a township, cannot u- approve use variances, we would have to go and amend the zoning ordinance to allow that use then in that zoning district. Um, as part of that interpretation of the zoning district maps, it's individual map lineage, so if we zoom into a property and we say, uh, is that a split zone district, or you this, or you that, that's where the ZBA steps in. But they also can help with different circumstances regarding ordinance language as well, looking at the intent of that. And then they hold their different hearings on appeals and variances, those are all public hearing type ventures.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
I knew that you weren't supposed to do use variances, but you're saying we can't do ver- use for it? I didn't, I'm sure it's quite wrong.
Sure, so you cannot do a use variance, villages and cities can. Um, but townships cannot. So the workaround, if you do want to allow a use, is to amend the zoning ordinance to allow that use in the district, it's a fair treatment type city. It's a fair treatment type situation.
Okay.
Maybe we might consider that, that might be a smart move.
Well, I just knew that it was a bad idea, I didn't realize that we were nuts.
Yeah, there's case law, not, you cannot do that.
Yeah, you'd have to-
You got precedence, you're always gonna want it.
Right. So, master plan. So if you have any questions, but since you've already kind of gone through this process, I'm sure that a lot of this will not be as, I guess, fresh for you. But the master plan is your long vision comprehensive plan. When I say long vision, that's about a 20-year horizon. Is when you really want to do a full cover audit of your plan and say, there's been some changes, more likely than not. And so what your master plan does is you can deduce it to three things. It's where are you, where do you want to go, and how are you going to get there? And so that's the different sections of the plan. So when you look at the set of community parameters as far as what your future is, you're looking beyond just the day-to-day activities of a zoning administrator or minor decisions. You're looking at the character of your community, a rural community, how do we maintain that? You look at the environment, so how do our rivers or wetlands play into this? And our quality of life for residents. That could be recreational components, that could be the wide open spaces and the visual release you get when you have those different amenities. Placemaking, as far as unique components with even in the township that make it your place of home. Encouraging the blueprint for development, a redevelopment. And then again, coordination between surrounding jurisdictions. As you mentioned earlier, one of those steps in the required notice process is you have to send your plan to your neighbor. We always encourage, look over their plan, look at your boundary with them, and do they propose industrial next to your boundary where you have residential? Those are direct conflicts. So think about those different things as you're looking through their plan to see how compatible it is to yours. So your master plan does have value as far as providing guidance to your community. It's a policy tool. It should have a variety of different options. And you, as the planning commission and township board, choose when is the right time to enact that, that implementation strategy. Or you might have three strategies to end up to the same goal, and you pick which one makes sense for that period of time. So it's not a you must, it is a, this is generally where we're going, in that kind of sense. When you provide funding for that plan, you put a lot of money into it. And so it's important to make sure that you're looking at, how do we implement that plan? It's important that, like any plan, if you don't look at it ever again, and you just put it on the shelf, it's not going to provide you much value. So it's important that, as you're going through, we recommend during your annual report, that's when you pull out your master plan and say, so what did we say was a high priority to do? And then look at that, was it update the zoning ordinance? Was it to investigate X land use? Was it to reevaluate how you do landscaping? Whatever the case may be, take a second and refresh. What do we need to, or do we need to talk to the parks and rec board and say, so what about this item that you were responsible for? And kind of move on that, because if you ignore a plan, it has no value. So when you're doing your master plan, it should be looking at your aesthetics of your community, the economics, the political atmosphere, some of the social aspects, but then also your physical components that make up your community. Now, when you look at your community from that master plan perspective, the elected body is responsible for several different policy decisions or adopting ordinances. They typically adopt your master plan, I would anticipate that be the case. They appoint those different planning commission members and direct those different needs. And being the purse strings, they control the allocation of funding and things of that nature. When it comes to the master plan and the planning commission, you are the ones that are also approving and adopting that master plan. You're overseeing the participation, so you've already done the, or you're going to do the public hearing, correct?
We don't do the public hearing until after the-
Notices.
Notices.
Okay, so you're coming to your public hearing. And then eventually that adoption. So that, again, the public hearing is specifically your role as the planning commission in this process.
So can I just clarify?
Sure.
The public hearing is done after the 63 days?
That's right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I get that right in my head.
Yep, you're right. So when you look at your implementation section of your master plan, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to look at your plan yet. But that's something that you want to look at, and again, as I mentioned, look at it on an annual basis. And when you do your five-year review every five years, which is required by the state. But there are no state zoning police. So you can look at it in a meeting and say, we looked at it, we're good, and that's your five-year review. It's one of those things, you keep it, if you keep using your plan as a tool, it'll serve you long into its years and its life, into that 20-year timeframe. So as I mentioned, again, that 20-year timeframe is mentioned even in the enabling legislation, trying to keep that short-term and long-term recommendations in mind. So when you're looking at your master plan, required-wise, these are the minimum required elements. I'm sure these are specifically in your plan already, talking about existing condition, talking about social economic analysis, your goals and objectives, future land use, a zoning plan and implementation. That's all a good point.
So I know that you, you know, it wasn't your firm that did the master plan, but you will be reviewing it and weighing in on it during the 63 days as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm gonna switch gears then to our zoning ordinance project. Is there any questions on, as we kind of segue from master plan mindset to zoning mindset?
Pretty good on the master plan? Yeah, it's pretty fresh in our minds.
Yep, and it's your building block, it really is, from that perspective. So as I mentioned earlier, the, your planning, a master plan is the foundation for your zoning ordinance. You cannot have a zoning ordinance without a master plan to connect it to. So there's the different goals, objectives, and policy that all relates to your zoning ordinance regarding implementation, what regulation makes sense or doesn't make sense, talking about enforcement. You look at your future land use map a lot for decisions regarding rezonings or land use changes. And your goals and objective as well. What's the intention of that specific district and things of that nature? When you think about, oh, I have arrows, oops, sorry about that. Alright. So when you're thinking of the purpose of your zoning ordinance, you're looking at it protecting property values. That level of predictability that I mentioned, you know what's generally gonna happen around you to more or less stabilize different anticipations. You're protecting your natural resources the best you can, preventing nuisances. You're trying to ensure land use compatibility, prevent overcrowding. And that can be per zoning district, having a different goal on that density and preventing overuse of land. That's just not appropriate. When you're looking at zoning basics, it's important that, again, your zoning is your implementation tool of your master plan. What we're gonna be talking about a lot is, is this the time to implement that change? Or is it something that we want to wait till later? It is easier when you're doing your whole zoning ordinance update to make changes. I haven't looked at your plan, so I don't know if you're doing any sweeping changes. But that's something to keep about is, our zoning will directly impact what happens in your community, what level of aesthetics is required and things of that nature. As I mentioned, the zoning has to be based on a plan. The zoning regulation runs with that land. So if you hear that with variances, the same is true with a lot of zoning decisions in general. But it's not who the caretaker is of that property, it runs with that property, is that land use decision. And so because those are more or less permanent or temporary, keep those in mind as we're making our zoning decisions long-term wise. And where it's appropriate, or just clarify those expirations. So is it a site plan review after three years of no activity, didn't start construction? You have to start over again, those type things, which you already have in your zoning ordinance. Any questions so far? Okay, I'm gonna switch gears. Unless you guys are good just looking at your handout, not the PowerPoint.
PowerPoint's messy.
There's one I-
Same one fit together, that was a TDX though. Do you mind if I borrow your microphone?
Oh, great, good. You want a chair?
No, no, I'm good on my knees, I'm young.
Just smart alec.
So what this first page is, is essentially, with your current layout, is on the left. And then on the right, there are proposed changes. So I, we have a general thought behind why we're making these changes, and I'll walk through each of them. But this is your zoning ordinance, and though I recommend a certain path, I do want to make sure that you're on board for that change. So that's gonna be our relationship throughout this entire process is, it is your ordinance and you are experts of your community on what makes the most sense. I'm here to help you decide the pros and cons of those different decisions and let you know what options are available. That's really my focus. So one of the things we're proposing to relocate in a more traditional format is definitions at the front part of the ordinance as opposed to the end, just from a traditional standpoint. Your general provisions section has a variety of different design-related attributes, like appearance, accessory buildings, things of that nature. We just want to more or less relocate into a section that we think makes more sense. So appearance makes more sense in your site development, because it's based on development site standards. So that made more sense there, as opposed to your accessory buildings or other uses like the home-based operations. Rather than being a general provision, should be in a use requirement section. So if it is a use and it has a requirement, they're all together, in a packaging standpoint.
The very first thing is a table of contents, which is a hot mess. You haven't mentioned that.
Well, that in itself, I guess, I don't consider that as a chapter or article. It's one of those things that-
It needs to be fixed though.
Yep, and with this Word document, that's the end product is in Word as well. It's automated to understand all the different headings and things of that nature. So it's a right-click and update. So it should be very easy to maintain.
Okay.
That's the goal. We'll be, on the right-hand side, we're reorganizing that general provisions article. We're keeping that zoning districts article, but relocating it again, just to be in a more traditional format. We're proposing to kind of take a combination of your general provisions and special land use to be a use requirement chapter instead. Part of it being is if it's a use and it has specific requirements, because it's X use, find it easier to reference. So you already have that table of uses that's in your ordinance. What would be happening is that would be first, and then the next chapter would be right after. It would be all those section numbers it's referencing in that previous table. So it makes it, so then they're not flipping from the front to the back to the side. And so we want to make sure it's in one central equation. If it has, if it's a use and it has a specific requirement, it's in this article. Next is talking about reserve chapters. So I like having those, because you never know what the future entails. So it's always good to have a few intentional gaps. So you can come back in and add an article for flying cars or whatever it is, in our future.
I'm still waiting for that flying car from the Jetsons.
And then gen-
Next week.
Okay.
And then general provisions, again, just reorganizing it to fit this different traditional component. We're proposing to consolidate your admin and enforcement article, but more or less about the same. We're proposing to rename slash rebrand your site development and environmental standards to be general development standards. So again, it has your different requirements that are associated typically with your development. So if it's a commercial or a multiple family, again, they're not cruising all over your ordinance for it. They're going to this article, and they're more likely to find just what they're looking for. The next article after that is off-street parking. So again, relocation, just to have them near each other. So if someone's doing a site plan or something, you typically have that maxed.
Question for ya.
Yes.
Since you brought that up, and that's what we were trying to avoid from, you're saying this is gonna be in multiple places if it's relative to that provision?
No, I don't want it to be in multiple places.
Yeah, okay.
But I do want to, whenever we feel like we should connect things, it'll be a cross-reference. So it'll say, also look at section 2.2. But we want to make sure if there's requirements one place. So one thing that's in your ordinance a few different places is public hearing procedures. And so I would rather have one place in your admin and enforcement that says, this is the public hearing procedure. So that way, if, again, we anticipate they're always gonna say 300 feet, 300 feet. But what happens in the future where we say, you know what, we want 500 feet? Because we want to be ultra-stars on public noticing. Well, if you forgot to change it in the other two places, now you have an inconsistency. And so that's what we're trying to prevent. We're gonna comb through. I think in our initial audit, we found a few uses that are duplicated sections and things of that nature.
That's my point. If, bear with me here, if it's, and I don't know which section it comes out of, the redundancy of it. And is it, because some things apply to more than one thing? Does that make sense?
Yes.
And explain that's probably, and you're gonna be looking at multiple places, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, and sometimes what we'll do, especially for like your use requirements, so you do allow for different gravel surfaces, and that's mentioned around uses. Well, if it happens 10 times in your use requirements and they're just slightly different from each other, why don't we just have a gravel provision that's in the off-street parking? And then you cross-reference, these uses may use this provision, rather than it being slightly different in all these different areas?
Sure.
And try to do that comprehensive review. I'm reading every sentence in your ordinance and determining if we should do something about it.
Right, because that's what we have now, and that's a, it's a huge debacle. And, and that's, anyways, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, this is, this is healthy conversation. I want to make sure you understand where we're going.
Oh yeah.
The next we're proposing is to pull out signs from our site development and environmental components, partly because those signs are typically associated with commercial and all these other development processes. People sometimes are just looking to fix their sign. And so having signs as its own article, we find, is just easier for somebody that doesn't know zoning to just find the sign article, because it's, and the table content, it's right here. Have another reserve component associated with it. Then we would have our non-conformities articles still, your ZBA, admin enforcement. So we would consolidate enforcement into admin and enforcement. And that's kind of more or less our proposed restructuring. Any questions or concerns?
Well, it sounds like it's, I gotta get right up next to the mic, she'll get it. It sounds like it'll be a lot more user-friendly than it is right now when you're trying to find something and you're flipping through the book, you know, it's not here, and, oh, it's not here, no, it's not here, and, you know. So user-friendly is, makes everybody happy.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
One of the things as part of your zoning ordinance, again, I'm looking to implement your master plan. And so with that review of your public hearing, that's something from your zoning plan specifically. I'll be looking to see what are your changes proposed in your zoning and have that as we talk through those different articles. So that we don't have to remember your master plan front to back. I'll help you with that.
Okay, good, because you may be young, but I'm old.
One of the things that we're gonna do is a table of district dimensions. So a one-stop table that shows you all the different setbacks, and you can easily compare all of those together. One of the things we also find really helpful is a quick reference bar. So our three standard one is based on homeowners, business owners, and developers. And so one of the first pages in that zoning ordinance is gonna be, so for homeowners, we're gonna have a button like that that says fences. So then you can click on fences, since it'll be linked and hyperlink and stuff. And then they can just go to the fence provision. So they don't have to go to the table content, be like, so where, which article, what section? It should be easier for them to find exactly what they're looking for. And so those are a few of our options as far as our standard kind of build, keeping of animals. People will call and just want to know about that. And so there's the button to take you to that section. And zoning district, same thing with the other business owners or developers, those different quick cheat sheet kind of situations. When it comes to numbering and footings of your master plan, we propose always at the bottom to have the article you're in and the name of that article. But then per article, it starts over at the number one. Part of it being from an amendment standpoint. So if I change something in definitions, I'm not reprinting your entire ordinance, because I moved two pages, or I moved to the next page. So each article will have one to whatever it needs, two to whatever it needs. So you only have to reprint articles long-term as we move forward with your zoning ordinance.
It's on the right-hand side, like it's shown here?
It may be on, yeah, I believe we do it on the right-hand side, or we will do it in the middle. So that way, as you kind of flip through, it's always a standard location. When we look at numbering sequence, generally speaking, your guys' was pretty good. This is my personal- This is my personal preference. I like when it goes letter, number, letter, number, letter, number. Partly because it's a little bit easier to remember your cadence as opposed to number, number, Roman, letter. And so if anyone has any, I guess, major concern, that's generally what I would propose.
Get rid of all the Roman numerals.
Yes, all the Roman numerals are gone. So one of the most crucial components of aesthetics parts of your zoning ordinance is font. So I apologize that I couldn't fit it on the same page. But I did provide you a few different font samples. And so if there's one that really jumps out at you as to what is the most legible, I wanna have you guys have some input on what makes the most sense to you.
Do you know which ones most, mostly used from other townships? Do you serve other townships?
Oh, yes. And I would say typically it's Arial thirteen. I don't have very many communities that say under thirteen font, 'cause why, I make it small. And so typically they go with thirteen. I guess, they're a little bit more accented font is Arial, so it's a little bit easier to read. So is that your chosen font?
I've, I've, I'm fine with it too.
Um, I'm looking at Calibri and Arial and I don't see any difference. Or did you already?
They look very similar to me.
They're, they're very similar.
They are very similar.
The next page has two more.
Yeah, all, all of them are very similar.
Yeah, they really are.
Arial, Arial.
I wasn't gonna do Comic Sans or anything, so.
Oh, you take all the fun out of it.
I don't, I don't use font fonts.
Well, there's more on the other page too, guys.
These are the correct fonts, 'cause it looks like they all printed out the same to me.
I don't think so, but-
Get glasses.
Yeah, 'cause Franklin is, again, you can tell that the G is more accented.
Yes.
And different, but yes, they are very subtle changes.
I thought Times New Roman was, had a lot more little, little things on it, so.
I'm not a stickler.
Yeah, they all, all four of them read well, so.
Okay, so we like thirteen point.
You won't get AIG if it's on the bigger font.
Okay, do we like Arial thirteen?
You're right, DJ. Times, Times New, uh, New Roman is nice too.
But it's, it's the same.
No, it's not. It's definitely not.
Well, Times New Roman thirteen is a lot bigger and bolder than like Franklin Gothic.
Yeah. But anyways, just observing.
You can pick any one that I define.
Yeah, I'm saying here.
Yeah.
That's why I said, whatever everybody else does, I guess.
Some people care, some people don't. All right, I'm gonna write down Arial or thirteen then.
Arial's thinner, so we can get more in these pages.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. So as I mentioned, um, because this is a smart Word document in a lot of ways, there's gonna be different shortcuts and hyperlinks. So when you look within the section, if we say also look at the variance requirements in article blah blah, it'll be there and then they can click on it in the PDF version and you can instantly go there. We're gonna make sure that we don't just do links to everything though. We make sure there's sections. So when you only have a paper copy, you still know where you should be going as part of that. One of the things that varies from community to community is abbreviations. So I provided a few of the most common ones when you look at PC, ZBA, but also our zoning districts, R1. My general rule of thumb is whenever we start an article, I spell it out every single time and then abbreviate. Because abbreviation does save a little bit of space and time and things of that nature. But I wanted to check with you as a group, do you like it always spelled out? So whatever page it is, it's very clear what's being talked about or?
I think common abbreviations are fine. And we don't have too many that, I mean, these are gonna be-
I was gonna say, these are usually the ones, PC, ZBA, and then your zoning districts. Do I do R1 or do I say R1, single-family residential zoning district?
No.
I, I think, think the one that we always get hung up on is the AG. In, in the master plan, it was being called rural residential. We changed it to agricultural preservation and then it switched to rural residential again, so, so that, that's one that-
As long as it's consistent.
Okay.
What the, what the master plan and the zoning ordinance says, they're not different terms.
So actually, I do recommend having a slightly difference between your future land use naming and your zoning naming. And that's because it's very quickly to see, are you talking about the wrong map?
That's fine.
So other than like single-family, that's like, well, how else do you name it without being weird? So that would stay the same, but if you have that agricultural preservation as, let's say, your master plan name, I'd just call it agricultural potentially in your zoning. It can be slightly different. I wanna match the theme. But if they keep talking about the other land use or something of that nature, I can immediately know, I think you're looking at the wrong map. Same with using different zoning colors, so your zoning map's gonna be intentionally different than your future land use. So it's very clear to see which map and you might be on the wrong map, especially for those that aren't zoning junkies or planning in that profession.
Is that you?
I'm in that profession, yeah.
Um, question two.
Yes.
Um, when you list it, you know, you said at the beginning of the article-
Yes.
-it's zoning ordinance deals.
Right.
Did you put like, sort of, so see this after that, like, see who?
Oh, yep, that's what we would do. Yep, yep, so we spell out the full one, then we put the abbreviation and then under the abbreviation, that's what we would be doing. Yep, absolutely.
I mean, we all understand it, but as a layperson coming in or getting their ordinances, I just think that would be a problem.
Right, and again, if we're in like the general provisions article, you're way far away from ZBA. If, that we only use it once or something like that, I spell it out pretty consistently, so it should be user-friendly in that way. Yep, no problem. As far as the maintenance of your document, one of the, so, as I mentioned, viewing the documents, you will receive a PDF copy of yours, but also the Word document in general. So that way you can have the public access. It's your work product. It should be pretty easy to otherwise maintain and update. One of the things that's in the front part of our zoning ordinance template is a blank table text amendments. Because we're doing a pretty comprehensive rehaul, we're gonna adopt an entirely new ordinance. So we're gonna level the playing field and start over. And so that's something that, um, but moving forward, let's say in five years, 'cause we're gonna do a spectacular job and not miss anything. So in five years, we wanna make a minor amendment. That's something that we then put in that table, so it's clear, when was that process, what was the effective date? Make sure that's in the language for that and it moves from that record-keeping standpoint, so it should be easier to maintain over time.
It's important for the ZBA too.
Yes. Um, when we look at project logistics, so, um, as part of this process, we do these, first part of the process is doing audits, is what we call them. I'll do it per article, essentially. And during this process, it was encouraged, the township board would like a copy as we kinda go through this process together. We're gonna be discussing it at our level, but they said they wanted to receive a copy, so just as a FYI to you as a group. When we do an audit, after we do an audit, what we're gonna do is then we're gonna review the draft of the audits at that previous meeting. So if we're gonna go over non-conformities and signage, the next meeting you should be expecting to have a draft one based on what we just talked about with signs and non-conformities, that's what we'll be reviewing. Then we would have new audits for like off-street parking or landscaping. And then the following meeting, we'd have draft ones of landscaping, off-street parking, and then new audits that we would cover. So they would be stacking meetings in a long way. So one of the things that's important, specifically while we're kinda going through this, is though we're making a lot of general dis, policy decisions, sometimes we may not know quite what we want to do. And it's important just to take a second and say, we may wanna ask the full township board on something. And so I write those throughout our process and when we get to the pre-public hearing draft, say, okay, these are the things we said, we're mostly okay with this, but we wanna check with a lot of other people, does that make sense? And have that last before it goes to public hearing, a verification that this is the direction we wanted to go. Depending on the nature of those changes, we may encourage the township board to actually come to our meeting to have that more, or even a formal joint meeting. But we'll get there when we get there, but we'll kinda flag that and that'll be the la, you'll be piecemealing it up until that pre-public hearing draft meeting. That's the next time you'll see everything copied together, 'cause we'll jump around. There's a general methodology, why I'm jumping around, 'cause certain sections play better with others. And so that's why we'll be doing that.
I have a question for you. You stated that until your audit is being submitted to the board, for what reason during the process?
Um, to just keep them abridged. We're working on this article, we're working on this article.
But not for their input, yeah?
Well, if they choose to, I guess, comment on it.
They would comment, yeah, sure.
Correct, but we are the ones being the work group.
That's fair. I'm not to be a contrarian, but it's just curious, what's the, what's the reasoning for that, just for their input?
Um, so they just have an idea of what we're doing. And so some, it was indicated by your township board, so maybe one of the township board members has a very specific opinion on signage. So if they see that we're working on the signage audit, they could attend and provide that input if they wanted. Otherwise, the next most likely opportunity, unless they come to our planning commission meeting, is then at the pre-public hearing meeting or public hearing in general. And depending on how strongly people feel about different changes we're proposing, that's not the most convenient timing to do then a three sixty-five. We have the right to do it. But the best thing is to make sure we're all most marching in the same direction throughout this whole process.
Sure, and tha, and that's where it falls into play, because, and I, and not that I don't care, but it was just a point that was brought up, that they were not supposed to influence the commission and vice versa. That's where I know if that's gonna be a conflict of interest there.
Um, so it's for application processing? That's, that, that makes more sense.
Does this fall under it or not?
No, 'cause this is our rulebook.
That's fair. I'm just clearing the air here.
Sure, yep, and so when you're looking at an actual application processing, yes, it's not encouraged that you have that um, cross-communication due to accusations of open-meeting act violations or things of that nature.
Undo influence.
Exparte contact, things like that.
Right, and I, I'm just, I don't know it thoroughly, I should say. I wanted to make it clear that it's, okay, great.
Um, so then on the bottom, I have my tentative timeline, so we're meeting our, in our March meeting. And I wanted to check with everybody, is there any months that we do not like meeting in, in which I can then adjust our schedule and-
July fourth.
Yeah, I think it's real close to Halloween.
Yeah, you guys have-
It's only twelve on my level.
So is it only July? You guys like meeting in December and things like that?
Well, it's, that's usually only when that's kinda happened. I mean, the first week of July is the Fourth of July holiday. So here's July.
Yep.
Oh, like December?
Yeah.
Uh, we always, we always have a meeting if there's a site plan application.
Wednesday of January.
Correct. Yep, and then my, um-
January first is a Wednesday, the first Wednesday.
And based on your regular business activities that may moderate what we choose to do.
Yeah, sure.
Right.
So typically, if we're just talking about zoning, I stack the meeting to be about an hour and a half to two hours.
Right.
Um, I, I, after nine o'clock, there's no good zoning decisions, so. So I try to stack my meetings, so then you don't go beyond that two-hour threshold.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, and so depending on how the, if we have one application and we think it's gonna be straightforward, I might bring one article, but I won't bring everything that I normally do, just so then we're making headway, I guess. But if we have three applications, I'm not doing anything zoning-wise. But if I know there's gonna be break in July, then I'll make sure certain chapters, like, that's not when we're gonna talk about the table of uses and then talk about the requirements for those uses, 'cause it's gonna be then two months break and that's not as easy to recall.
Okay, so I, I see all the formatting and stuff here and we, we know we need that really bad, but you've been through the whole ordinance. How much content needs to be reworked and tweaked and?
So I haven't done every article, but I've done a chunk of the articles. 'Cause one of my last little things is, I'm gonna do a little hand survey in a second, just to get to know you as a body better. So when I'm making a recommendation or talking about options, I'm more likely to get the options that you're looking for. Or what is within your kind of realm of possibilities. But that's something that I don't wanna get too far ahead of the game, 'cause I wanna get to know you guys a little bit better before I start ripping up everything.
What is considered a chunk?
I think I finished four articles, five.
Did you look at the overlay district and the value-added farming?
I have not looked at those, because that's directly correlated with your master plan. As far as the, if you made any changes to that, and so no, I've not looked at those.
'Cause those are the items that are coming up, obviously, you know, that, 'cause you got meetings.
Yep, so that's some, some pending applications that we have coming.
So you obviously died in there.
Correct. The situation for those is, is that by the time we get to our amendment process, we're not, the amendments we're choosing to make isn't going to impact them, 'cause they're gonna file before we can get to that point. But at least we'll, we can then go through and verify again, what do we wanna change, what is working, what is not working, and kind of vet it out that way.
Well, this would be a good chance to put it on the table and see how it works.
Right, absolutely.
I have a question and excuse my ignorance. Usually when I have a computer issue, I go to Chris.
She is amazing.
She's my go-to for that, but, um, the shortcuts and the hyperlinks, back to that. Is that considered like a, a search, search bar? I wanna make it adamant on, uh, on our site, website too, to where we can implement this as well. To where we jump to what we need.
Sure, um, so if have-
And I don't know if I should address that with you or?
Nope, so, um, I'm gonna show you a demo of another client. Granted, it's a work product, so they're, they're not done. But this'll give you a general direction of where you're going. Um, so this is Attica Township, so they're a rural community in Olympia Township. You hit Emily City, you've gone too far one way or the other.
But this isn't the actual ordinance, so the-
This is their draft ordinance.
But the links work on this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so in your working draft, there's certain things, I try to make sure it work right away. So you have your definitions article, boom, we're in our definitions article.
How'd you do that?
I just click on the button.
Alright.
So table of content, I can go to use requirements.
Okay.
We can look at all those different requirements. On the bottom, if I wanna look at the zoning map, this is not their done zoning component, but these are how we're structuring those different districts. If I wanna go to their general provisions article, they chose to have their accessory buildings here because it, it wasn't so much use space. They said, we have so many questions on accessory buildings, if we move it, it's gonna be harder for somebody to find, so we just kept it in general provisions. And we can make that same decision or put it in use requirement, um, within those things. So this one is not specifically linked, I think so, but Article two, when I click on that, it should take you there.
Take you over.
Uh, as far as what it's, uh, this one, no, not this section. This section's not linked.
So it's a finding, I guess. I said search, I apologize. I see it up top, no.
Yep, so in a PDF format, you can control find.
Yes, yeah.
In a Word document setting, um, there's also the find option as well, so this isn't gonna be the most applicable, it's gonna help. But, um, I can show you real quick. So you have your navigation bar on the side, if you don't know how to get there. It's under view, show navigation bar. And then you can type in something, um, so like, E and C, and it'll tell you where that is. It can talk about just pages and show you those individual pages and do different results. So if there's enough view, you can at least look kind of at the word, oh, you can't see on the screen.
Yeah, it's-
Um, so you can see on the screen then, um, is PC. If there's fewer, now, if you decide to type building, you, this is not helpful, because there's hundreds of words.
Sure, that's in my-
The word building is there a hundred times.
Redone, yeah.
Um, so that one's not as easy, but with those different pages and stuff, it can help you navigate. So the, I would anticipate the version that would be on your website's that PDF version, just to ensure changes in funny business.
So they'll look a lot like that Attica draft.
Correct, it'll be functioning like the Attica draft. Um, so this is, um, a work in practice is from a few months ago that we worked on this with them. But yours will be somewhat similar.
Turn it more.
It, for, for whatever reason, there you go, better.
Okay.
It, it, it moved.
For whatever reason, what?
Um, I don't remember. Now I got distracted.
So, these hyperlinks, and we're gonna get the file for that?
Oh, yes.
Or is it gonna be on our website too?
Um, so you'll get the file. The hyperlinking is done in Word.
Okay, so it's signed to us.
Um, so it, it lives through the entire document. Sometimes if you have a PDF, you can also do linking that way. We're doing it embedded in the Word document, so it sh, so it should live within.
Well, this, okay, so this is a PDF document you're on right now.
That's right.
But you're saying, and this has the hyperlinking as well as Word, either, either one that
Yep.
Yeah.
We would put online would have the hyperlinks.
Correct.
There's a preference between Word and PDF?
Uh, PDF is preferred, just because it's more locked.
Okay.
Um, and as opposed to if your Word document's on there, then people could make changes.
Right.
Um, you can still do pre, uh, password-protected and stuff like that, but when a PDF- Um, you can still do pre- uh, password protected and stuff like that, but when a PDF's so functional, you might as well just kinda hang with that.
Okay. Alright.
And that can be forwarded, PDF, not the Word. We don't want the Word.
Oh, yeah. Uh, Word documents can be, um, forwarded, um, Word documents.
Word can be forwarded, yeah, but like you said, people can make changes to them.
You'll change it, yeah.
Um, the other thing is, is that Word documents, um, because you're anticipating more changes are also larger files.
Sure, sure.
Um, so as opposed to a PDF, there's some level of consolidation from a data standpoint, so it should be a smaller size, easier to send via email and stuff like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, don't you see those commercials for Adobe?
No.
Three-year algorithm, my head.
I'm just kidding. No, that's fine, cause I, I think for my application, I'm not as savvy as you guys are and, uh.
Time with you, Joe.
I know. I, so, I, I, anything to make it more user-friendly is, uh,
I would love to.
Right.
you know, in our best interest too. So thanks for your time.
Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome. Um, I don't know if you wanna see a sample audit while, or are you just?
I decided, yeah.
Good to wait, or do you wanna?
Why not?
Yeah, sure.
Please, I should say.
We don't usually get the PowerPoint.
Make it bigger if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I do a cover letter, always talking about art- articles we're going over. We have other stuff on our agenda, so this is a limited packet.
Sure.
Um, but essentially this is an audit. Um, the right-hand side will not be filled in when you look at it, um, but essentially I mention what section it is. I talk about different comment, concerns, suggestions, alternatives. Um, and then on the right-hand side, during your first meeting, I'm gonna be recording what you say. Do you agree with the recommendation? Do you think we brainstorm into a different suggestion? Um, and so that's gonna be our front to back of this process, record keeping of the changes we're making overall. So it should make the public hearing or communication with the township board or residents very clear to say, so we talked about changes to accessory buildings, but then we didn't end up doing them. Or we added gen- uh, dangerous animals to our ordinance, or we added this new section that wasn't there before.
Or under performance standards, you would say as recommended, but you would stipulate what we want, if we don't wanna change it?
Um, so, so under that comment, if you agree directly with it, then I do as recommended. But as you can see on the right-hand side's performance standards, sometimes they change. So they said clarify open space, not in the front yard specifically.
Yeah. Okay.
Um.
I can't see that, so.
Uh, sorry, um, and then they agreed with the foot height over fence. So in my option number two, I say typically
Oh.
for screening purposes, you sometimes let the planning commission go up two feet above the six feet if there's something storage-wise that they just have higher equipment or something.
That's fine, yeah.
Um, so we wanted to add two feet. Some communities will do four, seems like a really tall fence to me, but each to their own.
Yeah, you're curta- curting it to.
Um, so I'm writing those different notes. Same thing with driveway, um, things. They wanted to do their driveway clearance triangles twenty feet. You can do anywhere between fifteen to thirty-five for residential. Um, so that's what this record keeping situation's going to be like. Your first audit is always gonna have the blank side on the right.
Yeah.
Um, that we'll go through that.
We have a dangerous pet ordinance, covered monkeys.
But it shows the picture you got.
You know, I suggested to remove that out of the community zoning ordinance. I'm like, you don't use this. And I, I, not even a week later, she gives me a call, she says, so where do you want us to permit the Middle Eastern bobcat breeder? I said, what? Um, what do you mean? And she's like, here's the call, um, there is a Middle Eastern bobcat reader, and if you go to the state of Michigan, um, dangerous animal provisions, it's lions, tigers, bears. Oh, my.
And bears.
Um, I think there's some other things that are on the wolves and stuff like that, but it doesn't say bobcat. So guess what? You can breed bobcats in Michigan.
Yeah.
Great.
Um, so for some communities, they say, uh, this is not permissible due to the dangers associated with it, and so we are prohibiting it. So that's where that, that comes in. You learn a lot on the field, um.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess.
And that's why I'm here. Um, so then, so again, once you do those audits, I'm gonna bring that audit back and record, had those recorded decisions. So if you missed a meeting or something like that, you don't have to read through the minutes. You should be able to take that audit, um, unless you want more detail cause the minutes are gonna be more detailed, um. But then this is gonna go with it. So, um, they'd like to see their track changes specifically. So they liked their accessory building requirements, so we didn't propose very many changes. Um, but as we get along through it, so we changed their general exemptions a little bit.
Did theirs look like this beforehand? It looked, that, had all that look to it? I mean, with the heading and, or you changed all that?
Um, I changed a little bit of it, um, so I always think it's important when you have a, I think yours has it too, where you have like the phrase that helps you find it and then bolded with a period, and then the rest is regular. Um, I think that helps you find it when you have those different topics and those sub-bullets. Um, so if you have those in there, I like to do those, um.
I mean, ours is gonna be a lot of red, cause it's, I mean, it's gonna have a.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, so depending on, um, so they wanted to make sure they saw all track changes associated with it. I'll warn you on certain sections, so like signs. If there's a ton of proposed relocation, it's a nightmare to track, cause I didn't delete it, I actually just moved it. And so sometimes they'll say, you know, I'm just gonna color it, and then it's deceiving, cause it's red, but I didn't actually change any of the content, I just moved it. Um, without getting into this nice color coding, like, well, green means I moved it and then red means I changed it. Um, so sometimes for those articles, I'll give you a cleaner version, but they wanted to see track changes where you see what was original versus what was changed. For the most part, that's what I prefer to do, unless there's like a major reorganization where you're like, the whole thing's colored. Yes.
I agree. I would, I would like that too.
Um, and so you can see the different portions that we're adding. Um, so, um, this is in the newer style, so they didn't have like all the buttons and stuff like that. But we added a bunch of different sections associated with it, um, building gray general requirements. If we're not sure about something, I usually list oars and things or color things yellow, cause I know we are gonna wanna talk about it, um, cause we said, well, we're interested in that idea, but we're not quite ready to commit till we see it. I highlight it yellow, so it's easier for us to realize during the meeting, we wanna have a more in-depth conversation. I'm gonna add some concept pictures. So for them, it was regarding screening and fencing. Um, fencing's usually one of those things, um, that always causes some rub. But, yep.
So red is a standard change you're gonna implement. What's green? Is that green?
Um, so sometimes green is regarding relocation.
Okay.
Um, so you can see that four and one.
I can, uh, can you make it bigger, please?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Why don't you take that chair up there?
I guess I heard it said.
So, let me see, yeah, so, so you have the different sections. So what I did is I, so I took this section
Alright, I can say it now. Yeah.
and thought it made more section sense here, since that's where all the wall stuff is. But this front part, I didn't think made a lot of sense, so we just kept the bottom part.
Alright.
So, um, those are the different types of track changes that we'll do.
Okay.
And these track changes will more or less live through the document until you hit the pre-public hearing draft. Um, then I check in and say, so are we clean copy pr- public hearing draft people, or do we want everything marked up still? And I think it'll depend, as we go through this journey together, where we are. Um, and so that's easy enough for us to turn on and off without actually accepting the change. Um, until we get to after the public hearing, then everything's accepted.
Uh, when, I think we're going through it, there might be sometimes, that people might wanna see some of the changes, you know, ma- not minor stuff, but if we really change an ordinance, I think the public should be aware of when it changed from.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's why they'll live in it, but I can give you a version in Word where you don't see that, or you see what the end product is
Yeah.
without removing the actual track change. So lots of tools with technology.
Yeah.
Um, so that, uh, let's see, is that the end of zoning, then we go back to PowerPoint, I think, so, other than,
Yeah, multires.
Other than, I do have my hand survey, if you'll amuse me, I guess, and play the game with me. Alright.
One real quick thing.
Yes.
January is the first of the Wednesday.
The first is, is the first Wednesday, so we won't be open.
We're not gonna do that, no. So skip Ja- oh, so finishing up our discussion on skipped months, we have July and January. Is that accurate?
January.
Ju- January first is Wednesday.
January first is the first Wednesday in January.
I think you're.
We, we can't, we can't, cause the board meeting.
Because the board meeting is that Wednesday. So we would have to move it to? A different day.
A different day.
Your point.
If something comes in, like if there's a hot topic.
Right.
We're flexible. I mean, it's not set in stone.
And, and part of it is, um, so some of my clients, um, like, um, hunting seasons, like a no-go, um, or end of the summer, they have these planned vacations, or it's the end of golf night party or whatever. So I, I always ask, cause then I'll pace myself to make sure I'm missing those months and we're not missing something critical, so.
Hardest times.
Well, we can always switch gears during the month.
Yeah, we can, I mean.
If we have to change the dates, I mean, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've done that multiple times, you know, if it, we couldn't get a quorum.
Do a special meeting.
Yeah, or just, yeah, switch the date and where it works for everybody.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, so my game with you guys is a one to five, um, so I'm gonna tell you what one means, or I'm gonna tell you what five means in these general policy statements. This is to help me better understand who you guys are, um, as a controlling body.
One.
And I know you do not have enough information to make a very clear one, two, three, four, five ranking, but just kinda play along, I guess. So my first question is the level of local control. One, a little control, five, a lot of control. Where are we at?
Can you put more context to that?
Um, so from a local control, you want to, um, have input on every part of a site plan.
Yeah, that's on the.
A site, every part.
Every, that's like an example. So you wanna be very involved in every detail.
You say, you say the, the plant, the com- a planning commission as a body.
Are you saying?
That's right, as a planning commission.
Versus having some of the.
Is it a residential, is it a commercial, industrial?
As opposed, well, I said, not a lot of detail, don't overthink it.
Well, it's gonna depend.
Um, so let's say for an example, so, uh, an example of one would say, so we trust property owners to, in the public interest of them and their neighbors, to do the right thing. Same with other agencies, their job is to
Five.
to do that. Five is that we don't, we want to have a say to ensure the property owner is doing something, or other agencies are doing something. So that's your one, or your five? Entertain me with your voting, so that way everyone gets a say.
Five. Have to.
I, I, you have to be consistent.
You can be a three, three's good, you're in the middle.
I think you have to be consistent.
Three, three and a half.
One is, one is, one is anarchy.
Then you're four.
Sorry, what?
Five.
Oh, zero.
One is anarchy.
One is anarchy.
Zero, we shouldn't even be doing this.
There are a boot hog on home.
Okay.
Okay, so we're kinda somewhere in between there, okay.
So that's open ended too.
Well, that, again, I, I'm just getting to know you guys better. It's kinda a fun topic.
I, if, if, if it can streamline so that it's easier and things are being handled correctly, we don't need a five.
Okay.
Right, right.
I go micro manage.
In the, in the middle, something.
It's gonna get.
Right.
Gotcha.
Gonna come out in the wash as far as, uh, reviews and permits and instructions.
Gotcha. Okay, next one, um, if there is a driveway location concern that's on a county road, so it's the road commission's jurisdiction.
Yeah.
You want to have one township control still over different factors, so you have to meet county plus us. Or five, you know what? That's the road commission's business, they'll do the r- right thing. Where are we at?
I, I, I'm not sure I got this question specifically.
So where there's a driveway location concern on a county road controlled by the road commission. One is that you would like the township to still have requirements, um, on top of the county's requirements. Five is that you're going to trust that whatever the road commission says is sufficient is sufficient.
I'm five, yeah.
P sign?
I'm leaving it more to, more towards the road commission than the township.
Or? So that would be five.
That would be a four. The road commission's five, township is one.
That would be.
Oh, wait.
Yep, road commission, or road commission's five, township control's one.
Okay.
Oh, that's fine, okay.
Four.
Gotcha. Okay, next one is the level of grayness. So when I say gray, so it's when you read something and you kinda walk away with something else. So first one, um, is gonna be that, that one is that the planning commission has a lot of discretion, um, so you can waive, you can modify that requirement. Or five, this needs to be something that the ZBA from a variance needs to be addressed if you want an exception. So one, PC can do a lot, five, the ZBA needs to get involved.
I'm on the ZBA, so I try and keep everything away from the Z. So.
A five for me. I, I don't like to pick and choose, and I, I just feel people can be discrimi- discriminated.
Yes.
You know, it'll go for one, but not the next, so.
Consistency over time.
That's, I, as long as it's consistent, yeah.
That's gonna be your most, I think it's gonna be, and I know it's the most mixed, um, is that question right there.
Yep, and, um, I know something I push all the time, especially when it's discretion towards landscaping, is you have some standards the PCs using to make a waiver decision. Um, that way it's not as arbitrary. Um, you have some basic fact finding that you're doing that's relevant to that specific item. Um, so that's something we'll be building in, continuing this conversation. In the same vein, do we like a general idea being explained as one? Or five, I want it to be purely black and white. My example is landscaping related. So some communities say, um, from a screening buffering standpoint, we want to ensure there's a mixture of evergreens, deciduous and shrubs in which you cannot clearly see into the neighboring property. There's, you're op- you're number one if you think that's great. As opposed to five, where you say, so we want an evergreen tree every thirty feet, a deciduous tree, tree every fifty feet, and then three shrubs every forty feet.
I'm one.
Yeah, I like it more towards the law, so.
What'd you say?
And those ones that say every thirty feet, you get the zig, zig, perfect zigzag row, uh, you know, but if you get a little leeway to make something look more natural.
That's not a number.
I give two.
No, that's, no, I said, I'd lower two, like two.
Yeah.
Five is like the, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I also don't wanna drive somewhere and say, oh, look at all those fourteen trees, uh, same trees. Uh, this is.
They're required.
Yeah.
We're not that thing.
Like, yeah, I don't.
Okay. Uh, the last question I have for you is, um, so you're looking at a site plan, how detailed do you want that compliance to be measured? So one, as long as you can verify generally speaking, looking at it, it meets the requirements, it's compliant. Versus five, everything is spelled out. So there's a footnote that say we are not proposing outdoor storage. We received three variance cases, these sections, these dates. Where are we at? One or five?
Five for me.
Yeah, I, I, we require an engineered site plan that got all the detail. I mean, that's the way it's set up now.
Yeah, four.
So, yeah, that's if I say four.
Four, five. I mean, it depends, that, that's all subjective, isn't it?
Um, so there's a difference between, from a my standpoint, a technical spec- point, when there's a plot plan makes sense
Sure, there is.
and a site plan makes sense. So if they're not proposing any physical changes on the site, um, so let's say it's an existing building with an existing parking lot, but it's a special land use.
Well, that's different though.
You, you can, you can take an aerial and you can label everything and mark things out, and you can write notes to verify things.
That's why.
And so that level of detail makes sense. But as soon as you're saying, yeah, so I'm gonna build this thousand-foot building, I'm gonna put in fifty parking spaces. Oh, no, this aerial is not sufficient to verify drainage and all the other things we care about. So that, that's the difference, but, um, I just wanna get to know you guys a little bit better.
Come a long way from just pencil and paper and.
Yeah.
And a cocktail napkin.
The site plans of.
Got a few napkins, you got stuff.
So is there any more zoning project related questions?
Well, I think the, the hot buttons are gonna be the value-added ag and the overlay district. And accessory buildings always seem to come up all, every now and then.
Sure.
Um, what else?
Well, it's a lot.
Trying to think of any, what ones we might've had issues on, but.
If not, we'll find them as we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try, we try to be proactive. We do both proactive and reactive.
And you know what? To be honest, it's the best way a community could respond. Some things you can be prepared for and you can have a response.
Right.
And you know what, to be honest, it's the best way a community could respond, some things you can be prepared for and you can have a response, and other things you don't know until you, it hits ya.
We typically win it because we have to, it's, it's each, each environment we go into is unique to that set of rules. Or, or not, really neat to it.
Now, this, this one, we were proactive, we do have things on the book, but now we're also reacting, so we, alternative energy, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Energy's a big one, yeah, I remember the mud bog, that was the biggest one, that was.
That was a.
Everybody remember mud bog?
Yes, that was, that was a lesson what not to do.
Everybody remembers the mud bog.
Yeah, I remember, there was ten things.
It was a part of our.
That was, that was a piece of, that was a piece of paper and pencil and we did it on the fly.
Wear extinguisher.
Well, Steve was driving his truck.
I thought that pretty much led to the engineered drawings after that.
Yeah, it was bad.
I don't think I was involved in that one.
All right, so I'm gonna switch gears back to some of our training, um so looking at that alternative energy legislation, um okay, so these are some of the very specific terms that it defines, the reason these definitions are important is because it puts your thresholds. So when it talks about a large scale wind facility, it's one or more turbines that generate electricity of a hundred megawatts or more. So anything less than that, we have full reign to regulate, ha ha. Do we think that a lot of energy projects coming forward don't meet these pro- these thresholds? No, uh they will be at this threshold or higher, but um I guess as we kind of more get towards the situation, a lot of different recommendation is not to change your current ordinance, but we'll keep in the back of our mind, these are the parameters of association. So I know that the headlines regarding wind energy and solar facilities, the other term though is the energy storage facilities though, um which you could think as potentially substations. I'm also getting this exemption because it's the storage or transfer of energy when you're looking at the fifty megawatts to two hundred megawatts per hour.
Those are the exciting thing from Eaton that I tried to talk about, that they're very specific storage facilities and you can make a micro grid for your area. And those are the options that come from having a, that um energy storage facility uh off the grid.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's something we should look into.
Um so with this, um the acronym they mentioned that CREO acronym, so that stands for the compatible renewable energy ordinance.
I looked at that and I saw Oreo.
So this is.
Google it.
And so what this is, is again, think about it as the marijuana opt in, opt out, it's not related to zoning, it's a separate police power ordinance that essentially is telling the pu- um commission, that the public, um forget the acronym, the MF, uh MPSC organization. Um it's telling them that you wanna be part of this process, if you do not adopt this by November when it's effective, then you don't get a say in this process. They just move forward with review of the project without you, um so.
So, I'm assuming that ordinance we have in place does not meet these requirements.
Well, so the ordinance is only telling you you're opting in, just like marijuana, um and so what you can choose to do sometimes is you can talk about use regulations, but we're gonna get into that in a moment. They pretty much hit everything we would care about regulating, other than a few things. So you can still reference your zoning ordinance and regulation, um but.
But they're saying if you lack an approved ordinance, we have an ordinance, but it's not approved.
Correct, it's not reviewed by their um commission, I would anticipate it would probably not meet the current legislation or guidelines.
Actually, then we did, we took that from uh the current legislation, that's what we were given at the time we implemented.
At the time, I don't know.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, since it was fairly new at the time, and they didn't have much, from what I can reli- recollect.
Oh.
Before two thousand twenty-three though. Uh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, so that's, and we haven't touched it since, so this is new as of last year.
And, and.
I, I'm not disputing, yeah, so that's why it's so vague.
Sure, and, and that's something. Yeah, and so while we're going through like your zoning ordinance update, we'll get this section and we'll see what we wanna do at that point in time.
That's fine.
So if we don't adopt the CREO, Oreo, we lose power, but we also lose responsibility.
That's right, you don't have a dog in the fight.
We don't have to monitor it, we left these other, like the marijuana um CRA, they monitor it if we did that, um so we wouldn't have to. But now if any of these large energy um projects come into our community, solar, wind, or re- other renewables, there's garbage was on there and something else wasn't there? There's more type.
I don't recall.
Anyway, so then we wouldn't have any say to it if we adopt this. But this needs to be the baseline anyway, these are the baseline rules, from what I understand.
Yep, and we're gonna go over those, yeah.
So we have, we have to have these rules and we can be tighter than that if we wanna, if we wanna regulate it, that's what I understand.
Well, let's go over the rules before we.
Next meeting.
Sure, so um some of the different things again, so as part of that public meeting, that's when you adopt into the ordinance or whatnot, that's being held at your local community. Within thirty days of that meeting, you have to make that elected official decision. So typically in other applications, you can say, well, you know, you, you didn't provide the information, we'll see you next month. That will not be our luxury, um it is something that based on the state, that if we haven't made a decision, they'll say, they didn't make a decision, the public will, the commission will move on without us, so it is a um unfortunate timing um from that standpoint. Um and then any applications that are approved or denied within a hundred and twenty days of receiving that specific application, so again, there's that timer um associated with it, not just from that public hearing kind of standpoint, um but also when they file an application, you have only the hundred and twenty days.
So they, every, every community has a hundred and twenty days to respond to a large project being proposed by one of the energy companies.
That's right.
For renewable energy, so it's basically forcing the integration of these projects to another authority and taking away from the communities if the community wanna sit on their hands. And say, oh, that's too high of a topic, we can't let them put um turbines in and not do anything and just table it.
Correct, there is no more moratorium for, in perpetuity.
Yeah.
Which you wouldn't, shouldn't be produced, it isn't permissible anyway, so, don't do forever moratoriums, um but, yeah.
Right.
Um so if we're looking at requirements specifically, um this is over all of it, as opposed to, I'll go then into each individual one. Um so when you look at the um, the site plans are submitted to that um state agency, decommissioning plans are specifically required. Um the performance guarantees are very strict on what those performance percentages are, um most jurisdictions have their own, you have to copy what the states are. Um when you're looking at the grant, um so each community um that's affected by this can receive seventy-five thousand dollars. Um but a total of a hundred and fifty dollar, or a hundred and fifty total, um depending on how many jurisdictions. So if they go over eight jurisdictions, you are not all getting seventy-five thousand dollars, it will be less than that because it has that other threshold if they're spanning multiple communities. So if a developer in that host community, um they have that two thousand um, two thousand per megawatt capacity associated with it, with that payment, which goes towards public services such as fire, police, public safety, or other infrastructure necessary. Again, most communities found that to be more of a negotiating tool based on what public safety apparatuses they had to combat if something terrible were to happen, now you get a very strict two thousand per um megawatt.
That wouldn't cover.
Depending on what you need, that, that can put some communities at a disadvantage.
Cover your filing fees.
They're gonna be.
Right, well, and again, these are, this is designated for a very specific purpose, um and so that's the thing to keep in mind, these are not like the cash cow that some communities talk about with marijuana.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Um these are for very specific functions, this does not include application fees, so like your site plan, things of that nature, that's a different fee structure,
I just read the two thousand. Yeah.
Not exempted by the government. Um and then you have different construction costs and things of that nature, um for those facilities, they have five years to put those in place. Um so a lot more leniency than, I guess typically, your typical site plan, you have one year to do construction, maybe two, um they have a longer timeframe.
Based on what you're seeing here, what do you, what's your recommendation?
What do you mean?
If we should uh go on to the or, what is, Creo?
Oreo, just say Oreo.
Oreo, what happened? Would you entertain that, if it was?
I think for most of my communities, and I, I think I would say myself, is if you wanna put your head in the sand, more people are gonna get mad at the township for not
Sure.
doing anything, as opposed to holding a public hearing where they could at least say something.
Yes. And not be heard.
Right, um well, and that's one of the things that.
Cause if it's federally funded, it, it, it's gonna go for the populace, I mean it's.
Well, they still have the same land use decisions, just because you have a, well, for us, uh, just because you have an angry room of people, if it's compliant with the ordinance,
Us, yeah.
uh we have some hard votes to make, um and so, I would hope that the commission, um when they are looking at
Doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah.
the public component of associated with it, they would take that into consideration, to what extent, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am, alright.
I know that DTE in their letter that was included in your packet, it sounds like they would like to good faith work together. I know I've worked with DTE as an organization draft zoning ordinances as well, um they try to be somewhere in the middle of the road to their,
Yeah.
to their effect, I guess, trying to balance between what they really want and what they understand the community would like. Um and so, we'll get there when we get there, when a project comes about, and if a project comes about, but.
Well, you're new, so we have a big semco uh area too, so it's an energy related, but it's not.
You have a transmission line too, that's, that's a high target, um so I helped um with the project in the city of La Pierre with their solar facility.
Okay.
Um so I was on the back end of that approval process, but um doing inspections, underfication and stuff like that.
So it's, it sounds like DTE could be a, a reasonable resource, is, I mean, if we reach out to them, I'm sure they're gonna have ordinance language that they're working on with a lot of communities.
So again, I, I don't know that they'd have a lot of samples, cause the state act is extremely specific. Um so, I think on my slide now, I have solar, no, I have the energy storage facilities. Um so for energy storage facilities, they cover, or no, um below that, um so for storage energy facilities, you clearly can have this project on one or more parcels, including non-contiguous parcels, um without requiring a combination of parcels.
Really?
Correct, they already have that, we don't have to have ownership, we can do leases.
On the solar or an energy storage?
So this is on the energy storage facilities.
Yeah, that's been like that for a while, isn't it?
Nope, nope, a lot of communities put their foot down and said, if you wanna do this project, it's not non-participating or participating boundaries, you have to do.
Both for the, yeah, I.
So this, for this whole entire discussion, yeah, so when.
Yeah, I got you.
But that's what the state said, huh?
Go ahead.
But that's what the state's doing now, is for, this is for the energy storage facilities, you can be on multiple parcels, one application, non-contiguous.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
That's not the common approach.
That's new, like California.
So what is an energy storage facility, a big building full of batteries?
Um, could be, um so if I go back, um.
Something more high tech than batteries, I'd hope.
So when you look at that, uh no, one more before that, so that's their definition, talking about the absorption, storage and discharge of electricity excluding fossil fuel storage. Um power of gas.
And gas.
That's gotta be, so basically batteries, right?
So. It could be, or whatever future technology they do, if.
Yeah.
Whatever they figure out, um one of the things we're not sure if that directly deals with is um carbon sequestering.
Okay.
Well.
You lost me, yeah.
With carbon sequestering.
So that's the storage of a byproduct.
I don't know how they would do it.
Like, like underground, uh?
Yeah. Yeah, so, so you.
They would ask us first.
Yeah, so I don't quite know how that all necessarily interweaves, but again, it's talking about the storage or discharge of electricity byproduct. So, um so I don't, we do not know the full extent of how this is gonna be used, but I think that that's something that we're gonna find out.
Oh, byproduct.
They do it on one of my projects.
I think people need to make a decision before we find out, because it may determine how
Okay.
this organization or any other one is, is gonna look at something.
Well, what they do, they, they'll take hypothetically, they'll take oil or whatever out of the ground, drain it, and they can store things in that cell, quote unquote, underground, until they need it to produce it somewhere else, or ship it, heck, wherever.
Right. Right.
You're talking about carbon sequestering, they're not talking about it here, that's not clear, Caitlin, right, that they're talking about.
All of it. Yeah.
That, that's, again, that's the worst case scenario, do they pull that in, I don't know, it's not super clear, it's more likely, like you said, the battery situation.
It's still. Yeah.
Let's find out. One, no.
Why, I don't want any batteries.
When they tell you.
Or the transmission lines and things, or substations and things of that nature.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, we, we, how about with what happened to Sinclair Township?
Right.
We wanna make sure, but that was butane and, and it wasn't batteries.
Well, I, no, no, it wasn't batteries, but batteries do combust.
There's always natural gas, and gas in the ground too.
It could, there was lithium batteries in that warehouse, yes, and lithium batteries have to be stored specifically, so yes.
Gas vapes and. That kind of ignition.
Are these big batteries of the future?
It would blow up.
So looking at um solar energy, these are the specific topics that are covered, it's more specific, but I just kinda listed the topic, so it talks about ground cover, unreasonably diminishing of farmland, does anyone know what that buzzword's supposed?
Is, but this is from our ordinance?
No, this is from the legislation.
Oh, okay.
Um so essentially what this is implying is, so some communities said they are worried about their agricultural prime real estate being swallowed by these solar unproductive
Right.
facilities, and so they were going through their master plan and adding some, you're fine, um adding some policy basis for saying you cannot put solar over here or wind over here, due to us preserving this natural feature, which is our agricultural prime land to provide food, um this is making it so you can't use that same rationale, cause it goes back to unreasonably diminishing farmland concerns. So, that's unfortunate.
Who defines unreasonable?
Yeah, that's gonna be open ended.
Right, I mean.
So then you have setbacks that are very specific, fencing requirements are very specific, height of those different solar facilities,
Yeah, yeah.
sound associated, associated with those operation, and exterior lighting associated with those operation, so.
And, and, yeah.
So, and that's pretty much everything we care about with solar.
Okay.
Unfortunately, um is all of those different things. Um so I believe your ordinance, what I put in red is the things that yours, uh, I know you have regulation, um and those different things, so that might be your different concerns. Um next is talking about wind energy, so they have noise, light, um height, setbacks and shadow flicker. They all have that specifically mentioned, um specifically within their ordinance, um and then you have the um requirements regarding storage facilities, they say setbacks, sound and exterior lighting as well, so these. So these are a lot of the different um use requirements that we would be putting in place, they're already preempted.
Okay, sure.
So, I guess any other discussion, as I mentioned, at our next meeting with me, you guys will have some additional training, talking about some different topics. Um just so then we're not overwhelmed at this meeting, um but then we'll start on our audits as well.
So what you were clarifying, you said they have it in, this is in our current ordinance, or this is in the?
The state legislation.
The Oreo ordinance.
Um, not the Oreo, this is in the state legislation, and so that's where, um we are, M, MTA is the Michigan Township Association, Michigan Municipal League, MML, I'm sure they're all, um they've already said that they're working on sample ordinances
Yes.
that meet the Oreo kind of stipulations. I'm anticipating they're gonna be more related to opting in procedures, as opposed to requirements, because the state has already put their foot on what requirements and we cannot be more strict than what the state is.
Right.
So that's gonna be the big bummer, and that's why a lot of communities are upset, and you see a push for a referendum in November.
So are we gonna adopt a wait and see what the state comes up with, I mean, is it reasonable for us to be working on this specifically as well as our ordinance as a whole?
Um so I, I'm hoping that the other um associations, as far as I know, they are coming up with their draft ordinance. And so I'm hoping that that will be out in the next month or two, because those ordinances have to get approved by the pu- commission. Um especially for my communities that have a transmission line, or you may be a target of a proposal. I recommend it getting there sooner than November, so then you have a month or two of wiggle room for them to review it, us to respond, and then get it an effective date, so um I do think come July, hopefully there is some different sample language, we can start making some policy change or drafting our own language, make sure that we're being with what the township thought is, and then we can work it through the process.
We're not gonna concentrate on this, we're gonna concentrate on our current.
Correct, we're gonna concentrate on our zoning ordinance, a little bit of a wait and see, but I, I would hope by July, we would have either some samples available, more clarification, um I know the commission's been working since it was enacted, I think last November, um to kind of put their organization together, um on how they would process things, so we're waiting for that information too.
Marvin, you had something?
Well, um where transmission line, is that the one over the, where the transfer site is?
Cause you have the high tension lines.
And it obviously goes, but right over the, under the, cause you go there, you get shocked.
Oh.
Never had that.
No?
It's good transportation.
We need to touch metal, yeah.
Okay, I, there was an article in the um MTA magazine or newsletter in February, that the MTA's board of directors recently voted to support the efforts of an initiative petition that would return local control over utility scale renewable energy facilities.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's what I was referencing, um some different associations are working on that referendum effort in November.
Okay.
Um however, that's a little too close to our comfort for me, um because if it's effective at the end of November and we don't know, I, I.
Right, yeah, cause it.
You, 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 each. you, you, each community needs to make their own decision, but I would rather have an ordinance ready, um, that's been through that commission, that you can say, we wanna say in this process and if it was a few hundred bucks for no effort or for saving us a future headache, then it's money well spent. Um, but each community has to make that choice for yourself, we'll, we'll see. It, we, they have till May to do all the correct ballot signings to see if it even gets on the ballot. Um, so that's our, if we're looking at thresholds of timing, first May, see if they get all the signatures that are needed, July, does anyone else put some samples out there? And then work our way through.
Sarah, what were you reading off?
MTA, um, the Michigan Township Association newsletter. It's in your board packet.
Yeah, that's where you were reading it from, okay. I, I didn't hear the beginning.
I was probably stuttering, I only slept like two or three hours last night, so I'm la la liant.
No comment.
And then that, that meeting that's coming up, there's one on the uh, March seventh and one on March nineteenth.
Yeah.
That they're gonna be talking about all of this.
Um.
That's where I got all the renewable energies.
Those are online, I think you can.
Yeah, I believe there is online attendance to those.
Yeah, Microsoft Teams.
Yep.
Okay, so where we go from here, we're, is that it for?
That is it for my presentation.
Okay.
Finally.
Well, I would like to welcome you and um, you get a lot of good information and um, yeah, it's just uh, refreshing, thank you.
Excited to have you on our team.
Thank you.
We lost him. Our one person.
Our one person?
They lost the interest.
We lost that one person. No reflection on your presentation.
I was gonna say, I'm pretty lively, uh, so.
Bedtime.
Okay, so just to re- just re- so next week, there's gonna be a little more training and then we're gonna get into that audit of.
That's right. We'll have our first probably two or three audits of the zoning ordinance.
Next week.
Okay.
Uh, next month.
So we're gonna, yeah, so with bite size, we'll start digging into our ordinance.
Yep, and it's gonna be jumping all over, um, and that's because there's a method to my madness, um, certain articles play well with others. If I start here, it it plays well with other ones, so.
I, um.
Um, okay, so I guess, like I also wanna say thank you very much, I think this is gonna be very productive and be very, quite an asset to the township to get this zoning ordinance cleaned up and hammered out, so. Um, are there any?
I just FYI, I won't be here next.
Any other public comments, you're not, I'm sorry.
I won't be here for the April meeting.
Okay. No, Sarah.
Tell you now before I forget.
I do appreciate your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Screen, it makes it.
That's nice, we need to have that if the township is a little more permanent thing.
I'm surprised we don't have one that pulls down.
We could get rid of that beam right there, we could put it right on the wall.
We, we actually have one that that pulls down, um.
Well. But it maintained the second story down with it, so.
We had one. No, it used to be up there.
It used to be there, it's gone.
No, it's, it's in the back room. I just didn't know how to get it to.
I know, it used to be on there.
So the, this, this was, I was able to move by myself.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
So it's, it's up to you two, um, on a project standpoint, so if we wanted to, at an audit standpoint, if you always wanted me to bring my projector, I'm happy to do that. Um, as we go through the audit, um, and maybe, I might have to be over there more, um, because it's hard to take notes and be clicking and moving.
This is our building.
It's fine now.
Oh, I thought it was snacks.
Yes.
I thought they were snacks.
I was like, I'll take one.
The Oreos.
I was thinking, let's say.
And, and yeah, I mean, we could set it up so that you've got a chair over there and.
Or better, yeah, may- maybe we can implement something here and ask the uh, board to put something up for us. Like a double sided uh, screen to where we can project, so she, the, she doesn't have to lug all this in.
We have a projector, this is our screen.
We do. It is ours?
I, yeah, this is our, I just did not know.
Well, the projector is Caitlin's, right?
The, the, the project, that projector is Caitlin's, but we got one, I just.
Didn't have time to see if it worked.
Gotcha.
I, I don't know if it works.
That's funny.
I mean, easy enough for me to bring.
It's sitting in the back room.
That's all right, I thought you were bringing all this, I'm like, that's ridiculous.
I do have a screen, but I didn't volunteer it.
Smart girl.
Yeah, no, there, I think there's actually two more screens in the back room, I just, I just, this, this one, I could figure out how to get it set up.
Yes, there is.
The other two didn't look like they were gonna be as easy.
Got white walls.
Yeah.
We do have white walls, but you've also got.
Windows.
A beam.
You've got beams and and.
We can stand and hold it.
Just cut that beam out.
I mean, we could possibly hang it over John's door.
We can't, they make you so useful.
And project it back there, but then everybody'd have to turn around to look at it.
No, that's why I'm saying they have these double sided screens, you just pull it down and you can see on it. It projects, you can project on both sides.
And the problem with that is if you've got people in the audience, they can't see it.
Well, that's the part where you'd have to have a projector there and one back here.
Oh, yeah, the, the, the board's gonna go for that. We, we spent eleven thousand dollars on this.
Yeah.
Um, I seriously doubt that they will go for a dub- having a projector that, that has two.
Well, see what the numbers gonna.
Watch, watch the budget meetings.
Yeah, I saw.
I, I don't, I don't.
I think we find out as far as it works first.
But we have the one, is the point.
And usually, you just move to a um, TV screen at that point, that has a screen.
I know, that's probably.
So that way you don't have to worry about projections, you just have a TV on an arm, that's what a lot of jurisdictions do now.
I gotcha.
TVs are, TVs.
Yeah, telescopes back and forth.
TVs are cheap.
And then it's easy, it's cheaper to buy two TVs and a projector and.
Yeah, TVs.
Yeah, TVs are really inexpensive, especially for, you know.
That's right. And they're easy to like, um, mount on a wall, so, not, not that we're up here being a budget, but.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
We could do a fundraiser.
There you go, that's about the only way we're gonna get it, the same with the new building.
Well, we've come to the final public counts.
That's why I'm saving all the bricks so we can rebuild.
Uh, there, there's no one online, so. Any comments from the planning commission or our public?
Public?
Are you quite quasi-public, cause you're kind of.
She is not quiet.
Okay, well, it's having no more business, um, it is now eight fifty-eight and uh, like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You're making a motion or you're looking for?
No, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll support.
Maureen. And Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.